I'd like to call the meeting of March 18th to order. And I would like to have Councilmember Williams lead us in the pledge. And right after the pledge, we'll be having a moment of silence for Matt Kellogg, who's a member of our community that has passed recently.
Join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
So this time, I'd like to honor Mr. Kellogg. Okay, thank you. Uh, Rocco?
Yes, Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Plummer?
Here.
Sutch?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
And Mayor Garibaldi?
Here.
City Administrator is here, and City Engineer is here. I'd like to introduce Vincent Vu, who's Deputy City Attorney, who will be joining us this evening. Let's see, Fire Chief?
Here.
Police Chief?
Here.
Community Services Director?
Here.
And Community Development Director?
Here.
And all the staff are present.
Okay, Item D is City Clerk's report on the agenda posting.
Uh, the agenda was posted at, um... Oh, I didn't get mine.
It's your writing tent.
Yeah. At 12:30 on the 13th of, uh, March.
Okay, Item C is approval of the agenda. Is there any addition, corrections, um, subtractions, omissions? See no? We'll move on to presentations, and go in order. And the first one, Chief Newt, you want to come on up? And it's the introduction of Koby Benz and Ian Crowthers as intern firefighters, and Joel Turan as relief engineer.
Yes, so it is my pleasure tonight to introduce to you our two new firefighter interns. And actually, one of our interns has started in the program, went to volunteer, and has now made his way through the driver operator program and is a part-time engineer with us. So, um, there's no action needed tonight on this item. And I have a little brief background on each of the employees that we have. So I'll have them come up. But I would like to say that on all of our interns and volunteers, the city tests for the position, we do an extensive background medical testing, physical agility, and all of them pass with fine colors. And that's why they're here tonight, representing the city of Sonora. So first, I'd like to bring up, um, Koby Benz. Koby comes to us from Sun Valley, Idaho. He graduated from community school class of 2011. He graduated from Colorado State University in Fort Collins with a bachelor degree in interpersonal communications and a minor in American history. He's always been interested and committed to working in public service. So in high school, he began working for a company called Spirit Tactical, and it facilitates training for special warfare groups in Idaho. He continued working for the company in the summers, and between school and volunteering for the former service as a trail building crew. On his days off, he raised road bikes and was able to compete at Junior Nations on two occasions, qualifying for the Junior National Cycling Development Camp in Boise, Idaho. At the end of his racing career, he was on the Audi cycling team. So, pretty good accomplishment. He's in shape. After graduating, he moved back to Idaho and began working for the Sun Valley Police Department. Don't get any ideas, chief. Uh, he earned his Idaho intermediate post certificate. And after two and a half years working with the police department, he wanted a better service community and adjusted his career path to becoming a firefighter, which we absolutely love. So, uh, in July of 2018, he moved to Twainheart and enrolled in Columbia College Fire Academy, which he successfully graduated last fall in 2018. In the academy, he was awarded the firefighter's firefighter award by his classmates. So that is a great accomplishment. During his time at Columbia College, Koby completed his EMR and his CPR training, and he's currently enrolled in the EMT class. Uh, this year, he will graduate with a second degree in fire science. So his girlfriend, McKenna Clark, will be coming up and pinning his badge. So since we have three introductions, I'm gonna introduce the other two, and then we'll swear them all in at one time.
Sure.
Uh, next is Ian Chek-Preeters. We've already given him a nickname. So Ian was born here in Sonora, California. During elementary school, he was on the Motherlode Gun Club trap team, where he won state trophy as an individual and placed second with the squad. Uh, he played football every single year of high school and was on the academic honor roll all four years as well. Uh, during his time at Somerville High School, he received EMR and CPR training, and he graduated from Somerville High School last year for the class of 2018. Ian enrolled in Columbia College right after high school and finished the accredited firefighter one academy in the fall and is now working on his EMT as well. Ian hopes to finish his associate's degree in fire technology. Uh, he's worked for his dad's construction company for several years and enjoys working with his hands. He hopes one day to become a firefighter and start his own construction company. On his days off, he enjoys hunting, fishing, and being in the outdoors. And his parents Lance and Deborah Preeters are here to pin his badge. They could come up. And our last introduction is Joel Turan. Joel was born and raised in Alameda County, California. While in high school, he became interested in the fire service, and he found his way into the Fremont Fire Explorer Program. At the age of 17, he wanted to be in the fire service, and he hasn't looked back since. After graduating from Kennedy High School in Fremont, he attended Chabot College, where he completed his fire academy and obtained his Emergency Medical Technician Certification. Joel was drawn to Twalney County at the age of 19, where he started his fire service career as a reserve firefighter in the Lowland Community Service Resort. From there, he became an intern firefighter with the City of Sonora Fire Department and remained in this position for a year. He was reclassified as a volunteer with Sonora when he was hired on as an EMT of the Emergency Department at Sonora Regional Medical Center, now in his health. And he also works on the ambulance from Antigua District Ambulance Company here in Twalney County. After developing his skills as both an EMT and a firefighter, Joel was able to obtain the firefighting position with the City of Angels' Department of City Fire Department. Two years later, after hard work and dedication, he was promoted to engineer. Throughout the development of his career, Joel has maintained his firefighter, volunteer firefighter status with the City of Sonora with the intent of one day working towards his engineer rank. And I'm proud to say that he's completed the taskbook and testing to become a part-time engineer for the City of Sonora. And so today, um... Bill Davis, captain from the City of Angels, will be pinning his badge. All right, this is printed really small, so bear with me. Raise your right hand, and look back for me. I state your name.
I, Koby Benz.
I, Ian Crowthers.
Joel Turan.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California.
As all enemies?
As all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I would bear true faith and allegiance?
That I would bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
Uh, well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Okay, so that's the introduction of the intern and relief engineer, firefighters and relief engineer. Now we're on to the item number two, which is firefighter of the year awards.
Yes, so I'm reporting again with an actual item that needs an introduction. And it's a great pleasure to present the City of Sonora 2018 Firefighter of the Year Awards. Uh, each year, the City of Sonora recognizes outstanding employees across all departments. And the firefighter of the year award began in 1994. And it's somewhat unique that it's voted on by the members of the department. This prestigious award is presenting deserving fire personnel because their peers view their service as exceptional. Many in the fire service and law enforcement are uncomfortable receiving an award for doing their job. However, when their peers recognize each other for outstanding service, it's especially rewarding. So please join me in congratulating the following people elected by the peers. And this year, Joel became a part-time engineer in 2019. And while he was volunteer last year, his peers voted him volunteer of the year. So he can come back up.
I'm pretty excited to be starting off as an intern. You know, it's pretty exciting to get that promotion to part-time and be in a different position. And, uh, you know, when you started off, it's kind of cool to see it, you know? Just kind of change of, uh, you know, job, so pretty exciting. Thanks.
Our intern, um... I totally forgot, I wrote a little something. I wanted to say, Joel, come back here. There was a few comments made for each of the candidates in each category. And so for Joel, they said that he shows motivation in advancing in his career and completing his taskbook for engineer to assist the department in staffing. He's gained a lot of experience from the community and continues to give back. And he's very positive and professional, and he consistently works to achieve his goals. So we wanted to thank you for that. Our intern firefighter of the year for 2018 is Kelly Figgly. And, um, some of the comments from the votes were that Kelly sets a good example for other firefighters. He is progressing in the fire service and just started his engineer taskbook. He's always ready to help others. He represents the department with professionalism and pride. And he has a positive attitude and always willing to help. So, thank you for your service. Can I say a few words? Our, uh, our part-time employee of the year is Patrick Harrigan. Unfortunately, he is unable to be with us tonight. He is also dedicated and improving himself. And so tonight, he has a study group for his national registry for his paramedic license. So he sends his regrets, but thanks, everybody. But some of the comments for Patrick were that you can count on Patrick to bring quality work to the department. He has put in extra days to help cover the open shifts. He's a team player and focused on the department's mission. And he has a can-do attitude. He is professional and personal. So we thank him for his service as well. And our full-time career firefighter of the year for 2018 is Tyler Pache. And so the comments from his peers were, um, I love the first one. I had to put that in here. Tyler is the department's secret weapon. He is quiet but a hard worker. He's always there to help in areas where others lack. He takes on small and large repairs to save the department money. He's a great mentor for the interns and the volunteers, and he's a great cook. Tyler is consistently going above and beyond to keep things done. He's very positive and very professional. So we want to say congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Okay, item number three, you go to the other side of public safety to the police department employee of the year awards.
Aiden, Mr. Mayor, our council. What actually needed on this item? Police Department each year collects candidates to recognize for their performance throughout the year. We have five categories, which is Officer of the Year, Reserve Officer of the Year, Civilian Employee of the Year, Community Service Volunteer, CSP of the Year, and Ronald Billings, the Second Explorer of the Year Awards. So these, this year's recipients is Officer Scott Mallon. I don't know if he's still here. I know we're busy on the streets. He's assigned a duty right now. You see there, there he is. Dispatcher Naomi Knight.
She's...
She's the one with the, uh...
The baby.
Unruly youngster. She does nothing but smile, except today. Uh, so we'll get her in... And then Ashley Kennedy. I just saw her. She is our... There we go. Community Service Volunteer of the Year. And then Curtis Bryant. I see him out there. If you could all join me in here, and, uh, do we know if... There she is. There's Naomi. Precious little one. If you could, uh, maybe come up here and, uh, stand by while I introduce you and discuss your, uh, nomination. Stay where you're next, please. Make yourself comfortable. All right, first up, Scott Mallon, Officer of the Year. He worked for the Sonora Police Department for just over two and a half years now and had been chosen as one of our, uh, one of the department's field-trained officers because of his exceptional talent that he possesses for police work. Uh, he puts a great deal of energy into ensuring our new officers are ready to safely work on their own and frequently shares his knowledge with other officers in the department. His case investigations are thorough, and, uh, he often, he often employs unique investigation techniques that typically produce exceptional results. His colleagues say he's fun to work with, and they respect his vast knowledge of the job. Most importantly, Scott's moral compass is properly calibrated. He clearly believes in the law enforcement profession and takes his position as a police officer very seriously. He cares about the crime victims and works hard at producing investigations that will help them find resolutions through the criminal justice system. Uh, Scott will also be recognized tomorrow night by our division for his efforts. Dennis Howson couldn't be here tonight. He is our Reserve Officer of the Year. I'll say a quick note about him. We only have one person that would qualify for this position right now, but nonetheless, if we had 30, Dennis would still be getting this recognition. Uh, he was hired by our department as a reserve officer in 1999. Due to sustained staffing shortages, he has been working as a contract part-time officer for the past couple of years. Dennis is a true investigator and a follow-up on his cases, leaving no loose ends or stones unturned. Dennis is a highly respected, uh, individual by his peers and his leadership alike. His experience and career maturity makes him a valuable role for the less experienced staff, and his vast knowledge in fire investigation has proven to be a valuable asset for the City of Sonora. Dennis puts in many additional hours in support of his fellow officers and mentors all level of staff, at professional and personal levels. Like many others, I personally look to Dennis for his insight and knowledge. So for that, he will be receiving, uh, the Reserve Officer of the Year. Next up, the Civilian Employee of the Year, which is Naomi Knight. Uh, she started with our department in 2009. Um, and she spent time in both a police officer position and a dispatcher position. She started as a dispatcher, worked as a police officer, and then, um, her life, uh, yeah, right there in her arms, uh, made her choose to go back to dispatching for a while. We're still trying to convince her that, uh, she's ready to come back to patrol, but, uh, we're waiting on that. But nonetheless, uh, having spent time in both capacities, she has a unique perspective and a broader understanding of police. She knows, she, she shows a strong desire to come to work every day, which is reflected in the quality of her work and by her supportive interaction with her coworkers and the public. Naomi distinguishes herself by applying exceptional attention to detail and self-initiative. Going above and beyond duties regularly expected of a dispatcher or record specialist, Naomi is constantly looking for ways for us to improve our professional image, reduce staff hours, and streamline our processes. Naomi doesn't wait to be given a project. Instead, she finds something that needs to be done, submits recommendation, and requests permission to move forward. Naomi, thanks for everything. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up is Ashley Kennedy. She's our Community Service Volunteer, CSP of the Year. Ashley joined us about a year and a half ago and has logged around 200 hours of volunteer time in 2018, while holding down another job. Uh, she was recently chosen as a sergeant for her unit and shares the responsibility of oversight and leadership of the Explorer Program. She put herself through the post-level three arrest and control course um, to enhance her skills and scope while volunteering as a supplemental patrol... I'm sorry, volunteering for supplemental patrol functions. Ashley is a pleasure to work with and is always willing to help whatever needs to be done. Ashley, thank you for your volunteerism and thank you for your hard work. Last but definitely not least, Kurt Bryant. Uh, is receiving the Ronald Billings, the Second Explorer of the Year Award. Kurt joined the Explorer Post Program in October of 2017. He has been chosen as a squad leader for the Explorer Post and puts many hours into the program and is always willing to help with whatever detail needs to be done. I probably see him as much as anybody, if not more. Um, as one of the Post senior members, Kurt is someone that the younger explorers look to for guidance. He'll be aging out of the Explorer Program soon and wants to continue volunteering with us as a community service volunteer. Kurt, thank you for your volunteerism. Uh, pleasure to work with you. You're always there to help. Very supportive of the department, and thank you. And that concludes our presentation.
Okay, next is Item E, public comment on non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest or not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation.
Hi, guys. So I'm gonna wear a couple hats. First hat is for the Sonora Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to tell you that, um, we're really excited. Every year, Second Saturday Art Night, we try to come up with a way to honor the musicians that play at Second Saturday Art Night. Um, they do it for tips, and, um, so we created the Mountain Performers Fund. So it's a $300 mini grant that we give out seven of each year. And this year, we're really excited to have eight different people submit. And so we were able to give eight $300 mini grants, so for a total of $2,400. Really fun project. Some musicians, some artists, for materials or musical equipment, something like that. So we're really excited to be able to do that. And then my other hat is the Mission Sonora Design Review Committee. Just wanted to let you know, um, you guys did the approval for the temporary closure of Lander, and we have thought together now and we're working on a grant. AARP has a Walkable Communities Grant, and so, um, we started work on that and we'll be submitting that mid-April. So I had to go back.
Is there anyone else like to speak on the public comment? See no one? I will go on to Item F, which is consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or the member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from consent calendar and considered separately. There are three items. One is the approval of the closed, or no, I'm sorry. Go, no, not closed. Approval of the following meeting minutes. The open session meeting of February 19th, 2019, and the open session meeting of March 4th, 2019. Item number two is approval to pay invoices of previously budgeted expenses on March 19th, 2019. And item number three is the approval of disbursements in the amount of $145,627.64 on March 15th, 2019, for payroll inclusive of employee salaries, employer or employee taxes, and retirement contributions, and miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions. So any member of the council would like to pull any item?
Yes. I'd like to separate the minutes because I was absent.
Okay, um, would you rather us do it separately or just abstain on the particular one that you want to... Is that what you plan on doing?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we, if that's okay with you, why don't you say you want to abstain on that particular one? Okay. Is there any public comment on consent calendar?
I just have a correction on this.
Okay, which minutes? Yeah, which minutes should I? Okay, so let's, let's do it this way. Why don't we pull the, uh, February 19th Agenda Meeting Minutes and do, deal with that separately, and then do the rest of consent calendar in one motion? Okay, so, um, looking for a motion to remove the consent calendar minus the February 19th. Okay, so moved by Councilmember Plummer to, and signed by Councilmember Williams to approve the consent calendar minus February 19th minutes. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? I'll call for motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. City Council open meeting set for three minutes of March 4th, or of February 19th. You have a correction, so why don't you go ahead.
Just on the paragraph of the second page, here's the last line that says, "The city attorney reporting back to council," and it says after/at its next meeting. It's either after or at its next meeting.
So that's a typo. We'll just correct that. There doesn't need to be a record in the minutes for that. It's just a, we'll just correct the minutes for the core signature.
It's a typo correction.
It's not a substantive change.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other corrections to the February 19th minutes? Seeing none, looking for a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Okay. So moved by Mayor Pro Tim Hawkins, second by Councilmember Williams to approve the February 19th minutes with typo correction. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions?
Yes.
Okay. Passes 401 with Councilmember Plummer abstaining. There you go. All right. Item G is unfinished business. There is none. Item H is a public hearing. There are none. Item I, new business. Item number one is consideration to approve a request from the Sonora Chamber to allow possession and consumption of alcohol at Coffel Park for the Second Saturday Concert Series to be held on June 8th, July 13th, August 10th, September 14th, and October 12th. And do I go from staff or do I go directly to the president?
I'll introduce it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Miller.
So you've gotten a request, I think this is the third year that the Chamber has conducted their concert series down at Coffel Park. The dates are noted. They have extended the time to cleanup till 11:00 PM instead of 10:30, which had been the timeframe in the past. There would be music between 8:00 and 10:00, setup would be starting at 6:00, and cleanup would be between 10:00 and 11:00. The purpose of bringing this to you is less about the activity and more about the serving of alcohol, which you have to approve by separate motion as an exception to your ordinance eight, ordinance number 827. All the events that they've held down there would not receive any complaints with regard to alcohol consumption nor noise, and staff would recommend approval of their request.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll look at public comment. President?
Well, gosh, you pretty much covered it. So, you know, we are, because we're serving alcohol, we will be fully staffed with board members as well as our experienced volunteers who are experienced at checking IDs and making sure that nobody leaves the premises with an alcoholic beverage. So we pretty much have that covered. You know, I was expecting to give this whole thing, but Jim kind of said it. We do have bands already lined up, which with your approval, we can move forward with getting all of the signed contracts with them, getting the certificate of insurance for the city, moving forward with our ABC licenses, and also our marketing for the event.
Cool. Any questions?
Do you know the hours of the restaurants on either side of Coffel Park? There's just, there has been a request from businesses downtown, borough business downtown, when there's music on Lightyear that, you know, that, you know, he finds it disruptive. So I just, I would just suggest that it might create some goodwill if you just let them know the two restaurants on either side that you're going to be having a limit there.
We have been in conversation with the new owners of the Mexican food restaurant and the other, the Top Homin place, they're members of ours, and so we're...
So they know.
Yeah, so they know.
All right. Great.
Any other question? Great, thanks. Anyone else like to, sure? Anyone else like to speak on the item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the council for discussion. Any more motion?
You know, the last one, one of the last ones last year, I remember saying it was packed. I mean, the whole park was like barely standing remotely. That's a lot to be proud of. I remember when I first moved up here and became part of the Chamber, and the work the Chamber was doing then has benefited so much to now and the hard work that all the board members are doing now, it's really unreal. So congratulations. I'm proud to vote for this, so.
Session, Mr. Miller?
I'll make the motion to approve the request from the Sonora Chamber to allow the possession and consumption of alcohol at Coffel Park for the Second Saturday Concert Series to be held on June 8th, July 13th, August 10th, September 14th, and October 12th.
And I enthusiastically second it.
Okay. So moved by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Plummer to approve the request by the Chamber. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for all you do for the city.
Item number two is consideration of adopt Resolution Number 03-18-2019-A ratifying the mayor's proclamation of a local state of emergency in the city of Sonora due to existing and anticipated damages caused by severe weather and flooding. Mr. Moore?
Yes. Following the event that was, storm event on the 6th of March, where we were inundated with hail and then followed by intensive rain, and there was flooding occurring throughout the city affecting both city infrastructure, local businesses, and residences, we prepared and the mayor executed on the 12th a proclamation of a local state of emergency on that basis. It's required that within seven days of that proclamation, that it be ratified by the council for it to be effective, and we brought forward Resolution 318-2019-A for your consideration, citing the appropriate sections of the government code and the findings similarly to what's in the proclamation. The proclamation's been forwarded to the California Office of Emergency Services. We'll send the resolution if it's approved by the council. Should there be a governor's declaration of disaster, then that would make the city eligible for potentially reimbursement for some of our expenses. It's not, there's not an assurance that that would be granted. We have filed with them to date in excess of $200,000 of anticipated expenses, which in part relate to this next item on the agenda, but over the weekend, we discovered another storm damage, and that has to do with the main drain and the sinkhole of the B of the parking lot. So we'll be amending our estimates of cost. We provided a notice of that damage, but we don't have a cost yet in terms of repair. So we'll be adding that to the list of costs. So this is simply a declaration and a ratification of the declaration, and we'd ask for your approval, and the city attorney has recommended that it needs to be done on a work dis-bug similar to the exemption for, exemption for the bidding process.
Is there any questions for staff?
Nope. Has to be this.
Is there any public comment on the item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the council for a motion.
I second.
Okay. So moved by Councilmember Plummer and second by Mayor Pro Tim Hawkins to adopt Resolution Number 03-18, or 03-18-2019-A. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, rather? Passes unanimously. Item number three is consideration of adoption, consideration to adopt Resolution Number 03-18-2019-B, delegating authority to the city administrator to procure the necessary equipment, services, and supplies for the repair of the Sunrise Hills Storm Drain without giving notice for bids to let contracts pursuant to Public Contract Code Section 22,050 and Sonora Municipal Code Section 3 dot 60 dot 110. Ms. Miller?
Yes. Just one minute. So I included, when the packet was originally prepared, it was titled Storm Damage Repair Sunrise Hills, which was word processing carryover, and I put in your mailbox a new cover memo that simply says local state of emergency. Actually, that was on the other one. Never mind. So this item pertains specifically to granting an exemption for repairing storm damp damage within the city with the exception, granting an exception and not requiring that we go out to bid to let the contract. It's provided for in the government code or the Public Contract Code Section as well as our municipal code. And I would only amend my presentation tonight to say that we would include the work that we need to do down at the sinkhole in the Bank of America parking lot as a part of the same process. We did include from the city engineer a description of the items that have been damaged and his recommendations for repairs as an attachment to this resolution, just so you had an idea of what the project will be, and I did send out to you by email some pictures and a description of what needed to be addressed down at the Bank of America lot of Main Drive. Original estimates preliminary were at $100,000 after review by the city engineer and our representative for CalOES. That number's been increased to $200,000. We don't have an estimate yet, as I said before, on the repairs down over the main drain, but that will be included in our submittal to the state. Work like this under an emergency basis of existing utilities is exempt under the California Fairness and Quality Act, so we don't need to go through a secret process other than filing a notice of exemption, which will work with the community, our planning department, community development department on that process. So we would ask for your adoption of Resolution 318-2019-B, and this does require a work dis-bug to be effective.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Miller?
No, but I do have a question for Jerry.
Let me get to Councilmember Plummer because he does have a question for Mr. Miller.
Okay. You included in the packet the page about the dual-wall HDPE pipe. Is that what was used or what will be used as replacement?
That will be used as replacement. It was not what was used previously. It was an earlier version, not as durable as this material.
Okay. Thank you. It's probably prudent for us to go ahead and let Jerry have his presentation because there might be questions if anybody has a question.
Well, I only came here to ask some questions.
Oh, okay.
All right. But this, to me, I've been around as a city engineer for just about forty years, and I've seen some flooding before, but this was the highest I've seen in the short duration intensity of a storm, and especially coming down. You probably got about an inch and a half hour that came down. I was in it. Then you had the hail come down first, and then, and then this was like somebody dumping a bucket on the town, and then all the storm drain inlets got plugged up by the hail, and so it had to come down the streets.
Yeah. Exactly. So do we have any questions for Mr. Pacheco?
I think there were two solutions for the, one was to replace the pipe not completely and then do a ditch. So which one are we looking at? What is your recommendation?
I think if we get in, once we get into the construction, get the contractors out, they could look at it. The lower section, I believe it's been washed out. I think you've eroded everything out down to a rock surface on the lower end, and I was thinking about just splitting it in about a half. There's this one section that's a real steep section that comes down to replace it with that HDPE double-wall pipe, and then take a good look at the lower section and either replace it with that same pipe, or if it's, if the soil has already gone down there too much, just maybe try to do a rockline ditch and that's concrete again to do it. It might be the cheapest way to have it.
So the short answer is it will depend on the conditions of the site and the instruction techniques and the cost. So we'll evaluate it when we, when we get there with the contractor.
Any other, any other question? Okay. I thought I said yeah, too, so. I'm looking at the, the street map, for lack of a better term. I went out there the other day and between, is it Sierra Village? I can't remember the apartment complex. But anyway, went back in that parking lot, and I noticed there was some damage along Morning Star and along the back, and then I also went over to Dr. Gravo's office and then looked down over the bank. Clearly, the part that we're talking about is the part between Gravo and going down the hill into the bank. But I saw on this map, there's like a line kind of around the Morning Star. Is that also part of the project or not part of what we're talking about? Kind of like a fluffy line on...
You looking at the sketches?
I'm looking at this, this map here.
Oh, that was just basically the location of it, but it's...
Oh, okay.
It's all down below Dr. Gravo's office.
It's just this straight down behind Gravo, down all the way down to the creek. It's not any of this along the...
No, not, you need, well, we'll need to make some arrangements with the Sierra Village Apartments because that's the best access to get into the lower section.
Oh, sure. I see. Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I knew exactly where.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? No? Okay. Thanks. Any other public comment on this item?
Question?
Please come up to them.
I don't have the more thorough packet that you have.
We can sit...
I may have this, the agenda, but so is the, I'm sorry, quick mark, Sonora resident. My question was just, so it sounds like as you were explaining, the area of damage to the, that you're talking about in this resolution or change is behind Gravo's office. The area, there's another area on Morning Star that flooded extensively near Morning Star Court. Is that, there was nothing wrong there or? I mean, there was like four feet of water running into people's garages and stalled cars. So is that, is that whole area not part of, is not being fixed or? I guess I'm not...
First of all, let's define it. Morning Star Court, I believe, is what's, we go down the bomb and hill, and there's a stop sign, and it goes around. Okay.
Just south of that stop sign.
Right.
It flooded extensively for an hour.
Okay. I'm gonna let Mr. Miller address other issues.
So, so this resolution is specific to an exemption to contract for work to avoid having to go out to bid for the sixty or ninety day process, and with our, with, and it'd be addressing two projects: the, this, this location and the sinkhole area. There's other work in the city that we have to do, but their repairs are not as urgent as these two items, which we need to try and get back functioning before we have any more storms. Flooding in, in a number of areas in the city, as Jerry noted, was a result of the hail blocking the inlets, the water, the volume of water exceeding the capacity of the gutter system and often the collection system and causing the flooding that you're talking about. But those repairs will either address with city crews over time, or if it's of a magnitude that our crews can't do it, we'll bring contractors in to do it. But we don't need to do those on the urgent measure that we need to do here.
Okay. All right.
And so for the benefit of the public and the council, please contact my office and let us know of those areas of damage so we can get out to take a look at them. If you haven't called into Public Works or called into City Hall or advised your favorite council person. So, because we, you know, we know, we've identified what we've identified, but there may be something we don't know about.
I'm sorry, your name was?
Tim Miller, City Administrator.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
Yeah, I'll make, I did want to make a comment real quick about the Morning Star issue. One of the things I found, I've done a lot of walkings, I think most of y'all probably, you know, went around looking at everything also, is the amount of debris that came down, not just the hail, which, um, my friend that owns the liquor store downtown, he ended up with most of the hail, I swear, in his parking lot. But it was, there was a lot of debris that seemed to clog up the drains, so once the drains were clean or somewhat clean, have, uh, one of our constituents lives in the townhouses there at the bottom of Beretta, and they were actually, I think about had about six, eight inches of water actually in every single one. It was a clogged drain. Lady went out and started cleaning the drain and all started going through, so. I, I hate it, it just came down so quick, there was nothing we could do.
It was interesting, it seemed like the hail had a lot to do with stripping a lot of that debris off of the trees and stuff. I've never seen as many live leaves off of live oaks that spread around the property, just come up from the hail kind of. Any other discussion or motion?
I would like to move to adopt Resolution number zero-three dash one-eight dash two-zero-one-nine dash B, delegating authority to the administrator with the additional, uh, what is it? Powers for the Bank of America emergency as well.
So, did you need that as an amendment?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so he's at the Bank of America parking lot?
I'll second.
And just for those that don't know, that's basically the corner of Stockton Road and Green Street. So, it's right downtown, we have a main drain, goes through there. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Plummer, seconded by Councilmember Williams. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five-zero.
Mr. Mayor, if I could indulge the council, my notes weren't very good on the last item. Who made the motion for the proclamation and the second?
Who would have said?
It was Councilmember Plummer and Mayor Proton.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, item four under New Business, consideration to accept the twenty thousand, two thousand and eighteen General Plan Annual Progress Report.
Thank you. Bear with me, now, if it's elementary or cold, but I'm a little hoarse today. Annually, because that's why they call it annual report, is what we can guess, but we are required to do a general plan report. We have been diligent in this over the years, and we, which has actually proven that as, as all the state laws have changed recently, that we are in good standing. So, the general plan, um, annual report is due to the State Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. And it's due to them by April first, and prior to that, the council needs to accept it, and we will submit it following that. It's to include information on the implementation for general plan, and then the housing report includes the documentation required by H C B. There are new bills that went into effect last year, there's Assembly Bill eighty-seven-nine and Senate Bill thirty-five. And so, this is the first year that this, this report in the format that you guys have in front of you, that's the first time we had to build this out. It includes the new information that they are required to do that under the new legislation. And the other thing that also includes, which you guys have already seen previous, is our low-income housing report that we have for our former redevelopment agency, but it's for our successor housing agency, and that was presented to you guys earlier this year, but it has to be attached to the report. So, in our general plan and report, we go over things like design review applications, use permits required, or submit, or other entitlements related. This year, we had the cannabis regulations included in there, we had a couple of projects, the K F C and Dairy Queen project. We did have our micro enterprise, and also we had, it includes projects that we are implementing, such as the Red Church project, the Stockton-Washington project, the work we did at Dragoon Gulch last year. And it, and it identifies all of those projects, and included with those projects, we identify the general plan goals, policies, and our implementation programs that pertain to those items, and those are all identified in the report. In the, the last thing that's in the report, oh, and we did have one close enough. The last thing that is in the report is, and I didn't call identified needs, because the report is supposed to identify any needs that are outstanding in the implementation of the general plan. A few years back, in two thousand and seventeen, we did a comprehensive update of our general plan, not a comprehensive, let me rewrite. We worked closely aligned our general plan with our zoning, we haven't done our full twenty twenty update, or twenty forty update yet, so. But we did do that, and really did a much better job of aligning our zoning ordinance and our general plan. We do have one thing outstanding that we started working on, and that's making sure that our land use designations as well, when we side with our zoning. So, uh, some of it's already been done, and some of what we'll be doing as part of the housing element, but what we'll be looking at is which is the correct, whether it's the general plan designation or the current zoning, based on the changes that we've made in the general plan. So, we'll be going through with that. Anybody that's going to have a change on their property will be notified, and then they can come in to speak with the funding staff if they have any concerns. So, we'll be working on that, and like I said, on all the housing-related properties, we'll do that as part of the housing element, work that we're going to be starting here shortly. And that's the other item, is we do need to get going on the housing element. We've had some initial meetings with the county, we've had a telephone conference with H C B as far as what they're going to expect to see in the housing element, so we're geared up to get going on it. There's a lot of changes this time, as I've already told you guys, and so we'll be working on that. So, that's, those are a couple of our outstanding items. The housing element needs to be adopted by August, so, um, like I said, we'll be getting these going on here shortly in the fall. We've just kind of got geared up to go. The last thing, or the other thing that I'll go over is the housing element itself report. As you can see, we did a walking two houses. But we did have four parcels created with a parcel map, so. And we do now include, which we didn't in the past, we include whether a house were, we accept an application for our residential structure. We now identify that, even if the, even if the house hasn't been completed, or the structure hasn't been completed, and then they'll follow it through the progress. So, next year, the house that we received an application on, but it wasn't completed, next year it will be in the report as a completed residential unit. So, that's a change before, you just reported on when they were completed, so that's different. We never reported on parcel maps before, or entitlement-type applications for residential, but they want, they're trying to determine whether what the roadblocks are in the city and county governments to make sure that people are applying and then not getting approved, and so they want to, they want to catch that cycle. And, um, obviously, that's not the case here, but, and so the parcel map is included. Of note is, and this will be the last time that you, no, you'll see it all in my life, because we'll have to record on this year, when you have our regional, our R E N A number, R E A, progress for this housing element. And it is, it's on Table B, and unfortunately, the report isn't numbered, page numbered. But our R E N A numbers for this turnaround were very low, was twenty-three, low was sixteen, moderate nineteen, above moderate forty-two for a total R E N A, which is your regional housing needs allocation that was assigned to the city at the start of this housing element. And as of this year, we have no very low to report, but we did a cumulative total of ten in the, in my low, in our low. And we had eight in our moderate, and we had five in our above, so we have total units, so far, in our R E N A of twenty-three units, and seventy-seven are still outstanding. So, it also includes in here all of the implementation programs that were included within our housing element, and I, we identify in there what's been completed, what hasn't been completed, and where we are on various items, and reported on any ongoing items. So, the next housing element, though, we have talks to H C B, and we're going to limit the number of implementation programs, so we won't have this long list the next time around, so. We're gonna have something more manageable. But we have made a lot of progress, and like I said, we are actually in very good standing with the state, because we haven't made a lot of progress, and, and they, they're not upset with the city as much.
Well, that sounds good. You mentioned earlier in the presentation about that you had to, when you stopped doing the housing element, you had to contact State, H C B, but you also mentioned you had to contact county, I was wondering why.
So, the county, Sheila Shavahan and Quincy that are working on the county's housing element. We've actually had a couple of conference calls with H C B, because the R E N A numbers are county-wide. So, and they're working with us on our R E N A numbers, the county and the city are on the phone or at the table with them at the same time. And then we all met recently to look at implementation and who are we going to be assigned to help us, because at this point, until our last phone call, well, even at our last phone call, they haven't assigned staff for the county or the city. So, those kind of conversations, and then how they expect they're going to proceed, and we talked about what we're going to proceed with the city, so it's good to kind of touch bases with them.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's what I was wondering, I just didn't know, I was wondering if we had to get some sort of approval from the county, that didn't sound right, so that's why I just want to make clear.
We do our housing element, maybe theirs.
Exactly. Okay, is there any questions for staff?
I have two.
Councilmember Williams?
So, you mentioned that the R E N A numbers are county-wide, but are these numbers for the city?
Yes, when they, they assign the city their own numbers.
And then have the project up there of a child, the Lankie project, have they done a partial?
No, we have not received any applications from them.
That would be a nice addition.
Anything over here? Okay, thanks. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to public comment, is there anyone that'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for more, for the discussion or motion.
I'll move to accept the twenty eighteen General Plan Annual Progress Report.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Protem Hawkins, and seconded by Councilmember Williams to accept the report. Is there any further discussion? No, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. Item number five of New Business is consideration to adopt Resolution number zero-three one-eight dash two-zero-one-nine dash C, authorizing the payment of fees, services, and other debts by credit card and establishing a processing fee. Ministry of Services Director, Mr. Korski.
Good evening. So, this is just to establish a five-dollar transaction fee, so we can begin to offer credit cards for our customers. Right now, the only way to pay is cash or a check. We would like to offer credit cards, and so this fee covers our expenses. There is some expenses as far as a transaction fee we would have to pay, and a hardware fee. So, the five-dollar fee covers that, and basically, that's what we're doing.
Does this also apply to debit as well with credit cards?
Uh, just credit right now.
Okay, will we be doing debit in the future?
Uh, we can certainly look at that.
I think that's, well, in my opinion, that's a good idea. Um, any questions for staff?
Everybody's doing this.
Yeah, we're kind of behind the times.
Anytime you buy, take it, you pay for the fee.
Yeah, I was a little surprised that we didn't accept credit or.
Well, I guess we're moving into the future.
Moving now into the twentieth century. Forget about the twenty-first, but we're out of nineteen.
We'll get there before Apple Pay or whatever.
Okay, any other questions? No? Okay. Did you have a question for, okay, all right, thanks. Any public comment? Anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none, bring it back for motion and/or a discussion, I think, Councilmember Williams.
I just would ask that my name be spelled correctly.
Oh, did they double L it?
Double L.
Where?
At the very bottom of the resolution.
Oh, where you signed this.
Single L.
But we won't sign this one tonight. Notice it's very French.
Double L? No, it doesn't. One L is very French.
Okay. Seen, any further, any public, further public comment, or any discussion, rather? Good, I'm glad you're making a motion, Mr. Protem.
I'll move to adopt Resolution number three-eighteen dash twenty-nineteen dash C, authorizing the payment of fees, services, and other debts by credit card and establishing a processing fee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council, or Mayor Protem Hawkins, seconded by Councilmember Williams to, to adopt Resolution of three eighteen, two thousand and nineteen C. Call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. Okay, oh, I'd almost forgotten about this. Item six is T C E D A board member, which is the mayor, me. Oral report regarding the Tommy County Economic Development Authority, March fourteenth meeting, and dissolution actions. And I believe this is mainly for the benefit of Mr. Plummer, because the rest of us were all there in one form or another. The latest E D A meeting was held on the March fourteenth in the morning. Basically, we discussed, uh, let us go through it. Uh, we had a presentation on the executive director severance agreement, which was, had, was, had no action on it, it was already worked out with H R, Human Resources, and so that was just a presentation. Item B was designation of a T C E D A secretary, and if I'm not mistaken, we, um, voted to adopt that the county council, who is also the E D A council, act as the secretary as the, for the E D A. And then, item C was review of the E D A fiscal inventory. And after some discussion, basically, it was determined that we would use the surplus value that the county usually uses for their, how they value their, uh, surplus value for, for equipment and inventory. We, all the stuff that was loaned out to different agencies that we found out about, that was loaned back, will come back, and the city and the county will have first dibs before disposal to see whether the city or the county wants the item. And that relationship is a seventy-six to twenty-four percent divvying up, twenty-six city, or seventy-six city, twenty-four, seventy-six county, twenty-four city. And if neither the county nor the city wants the remainder of the items, then we go through a disposal process. And Mr. Mayor Protem Hawkins made clear that he wanted to make sure that any, and rightfully so, any surplus would be a fair market value, um, and everyone on the board agreed to that. And item D was review of the records distribution, and there were four, four categories of documents. Legal documents would be retained in the office of county council, and remember, the county council is also acting as the E D A's council. So, therefore, it's really the, it's being retained there because they are the E D A council. I did ask the question whether, you know, if there was any legal documents that were available, supposedly, in theory, available to. available, supposedly, in theory, available to the county council and not the EDA council, I mean, as well as EDA council, that the city attorneys would have access to those because they are partners of the agency as opposed to, you know, the EDA council. And that was assured to me. Human resources will be, records will be retained in the county human resources department. The auditor controller records that would be, fiscal records would be held in the county's auditor controller office, mainly as those are, the county auditor controller acts as the EDA's auditor controller. And then miscellaneous record would be divvied up between the city and, would be given to the city and the county, not divvied up, but the city and the county. And also electro, the auditors' controllers' records would be, also, we'd give electronic copy of, the city would give electronic copy of those fiscal records. Item E, which was a direction to the county auditor controller regarding the EDA fund accounts, the auditor controller wanted to close the reserve and restricted funds and move them to, into the operating funds, so we'd be better away to finally, ultimately close out the EDA. So she asked that, that the EDA board move those funds over to, into operating funds so that we can do that, and the board agreed to do that, and, uh, and there was a presentation on the, what was the status of the dissolution process, including that of outstanding contracts. There is a list of differing contracts that the EDA had with different agencies, I'll go ahead and list them, Valley Sierra SBDC agreement, Sabre Design agreement, in motion hosting, which is the website, Superintendent Schools robot lending agreement, Mountain Leisure Center for office space in Groveland, Blackwood Casino Resort direct billing, Comcast, Ring Central for the phones, Comcast for the internet, and the lease of ninety-nine North Washington Street. For the web hosting, that's been terminated and the website is no longer in existence. For the SBDC and Sabre Design, that was canceled with no additional cost for cancellation. The robot lending actually had an, was the only one that, I believe, had a written agreement, and that goes to the end of June, and, and Superintendent Schools is to return that at the end of June. Leisure Center, Mountain Leisure Center in Groveland, those provided, and the lease terminates on March twenty-eighth of this month, at the end of this month. The Blackwood Casino one has been closed out. The internet service Comcast has been closed out with an early cancellation fee of a thousand dollars, a thousand and eighty-three dollars and eleven cents. Yeah. Ring Central has been canceled, and they're understanding that there's no early cancellation fees, and lease on the, across the street here is, is a county lease. TCEDA's lease portion is thirteen hundred and six dollars and eighty cents a month, expected this relevant amount will continue to be due to, until the EDA is fully resolved and the county takes over the space. This is something that will be addressed in more detail with city attorney, city manager, county administrator, and me at the end of the month. And the, the city attorney and city administrator, county administrator, auditor controller had scheduled a meeting for the thirteenth, which was the day before that meeting, but because of conflict, there was, was rescheduled for the week of March twenty-fifth. And I believe our next meeting, the EDA's next meeting is, is May ninth, but I think we were talking about possibly meeting sooner than April.
Yeah, it sounded like April.
Okay, and, yeah, and the only other, let me make sure I got everything before I ask for other questions. Oh, and we also designated the, the Economic Prosperity Council secretary as well, just to make touch base with the other organization. The fiscal audit is supposed to be issued in, by the end of March, and the management audits, there was a recommendation that was supposed to happen at the end of the week, this is, that was, would be last week to, this is Debbie Batista reporting, this, that, there was recommendations by the end of that week, which would have been last Friday, and it is also supposed to be issued at the end of March. So I think that's kind of a synopsis of, of that meeting. Mayor Pro Tem, who also sits on the board, Hawkins, to see if there's anything else that I may have left out.
I, I don't think there's actually anything that was left out, I think that things are wrapping up pretty smoothly. I'm glad that as a city we put more pressure on for things to wrap up a little quicker, because I, I do believe they would have wrapped up a lot slower had we not. My big thing in there, as you brought up, and I appreciate it, was that the fact that we, anything that is left over that is sold, there's a fair market value. There were questions in the grand jury's report about transparency and that sort of thing, and last thing I wanted to see is whether entity maybe get a computer, computers for a dollar when it's worth three hundred dollars. I didn't want to see something like that happen, so I'm just glad the board supported that, so I, I think that's all I can really add.
Okay. That's pretty much it, I mean, you guys, you two were there, is there anything I left out?
No, but I do have a question. The money that was in the prosperity council, where is that sitting? Where is that money sitting?
Currently, I, it is sitting with the auditor controller, as far as I understand.
Is it still sit, is it still in the nonprofit account? Or has it been?
No, I remember we went over that.
But has it been commingled?
No, I mean, commingled with EDA, no, it's, it's being kept separate.
They have not closed, there was, there was an item to...
No, it won't be closed.
To close that on a prior agenda, but that has not happened.
Okay.
No, it's not going to be closed for long. Okay.
You covered it.
Okay.
Mark.
Thank you. Got a question?
My absence obviously pained me horribly. Yes, sounds like everything's wrapping up, do we have any timeline that is more specific than as soon as possible? And was, maybe this is a question of Mr. Miller, but, but are we, is there enough sitting in the available funds that were sitting sort of idle that we won't have a lot more money up?
Do you want to take the second question first? That meeting hasn't really happened, so...
I'll give you the same answer for, for both of the questions. The timeframe and, and our financial obligations, I think, will be better defined after the city attorney and I meet with county council and county administrative officer, and then me be the auditor controller.
Thank you.
And that, that is scheduled, I think, for Monday, the twenty-fifth.
All I know is it said on, in the paperwork and agenda, it was the week of the twenty-fifth, so...
So I, so the, the appointment's been scheduled, and it is that week, I believe it's Monday.
Okay. Okay. Is there any, since a, where was I? So is there any public comment on the, on the report?
Thank you for leaving the report.
Sure.
That was just a lot of material, I'll just, Barbara, just, a lot of material, very quickly, how does the public get a copy of that?
What, I can, uh...
Is that, I, it sounds like there was notes, is there, is that going to be written down somewhere?
There's a, there's a staff report the county council prepared that I can forward to you.
I like that, yeah.
Yeah, basically, yeah, basically, we pretty much followed the, what was recommended by the staff report, so if there's anything that's different, I can cer- certainly let you know, but I think it, it pretty much followed the...
Okay, you have a staff report, whatever, if that's what you have followed.
In fact, I believe it's, it's, that's right, because it's...
No, there's no website.
The website's ours.
They'll have to forward what I got.
Okay, yeah.
See, see me after your, the meeting with your email address, please.
I'll send it to you, because I can't wait till the end of the meeting, and then is that May twenty-fifth, you're having that wrap-up meeting with county council?
That is a staff meeting, and it is May twenty-fifth.
May, March.
I mean, March twenty-fifth, did I say May? I meant March.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Anyone else, any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, that, and...
Did he have a five-year contract or something coming into the building? I, that just seems like an awful lot to get out.
I don't know, it could be a long-term contract that they signed a five-year thing to, and then now it's one year into it, that's speculation, I don't know. Okay.
I'll do my best.
What's that?
Nothing, I won't say it.
Okay, good, that's probably wise. J is monthly reports, we have monthly reports from the community development department, the fire department, the police department, and public works. Is there any, well, just, item K is Vision Snore Committee report, there is none. Item L is communications, there are none. Councilmember and department head reports, we'll start back with Chief of the Benewill.
I think I have, thank you.
Okay, how about Chief New? Anything new, Chief New?
Something old.
Okay. Something funny, exactly.
I know Chief Benewill slightly touched on it during this presentation, but tonight, or tomorrow night, the veterans' hall will be honoring public safety employees with a dinner, they do that every year, and we really appreciate it, and his representative, you said was going to be Scott Maylin, and the fire department is going to be Tyler Pachet, so we'll be joining them for, for dinner tomorrow night, so just want to publicly thank them, they put on a really nice dinner and presentation to all the employees in Tammy County.
That's what it is, cool. Community Services Director, or Community Services, Community Development Director, Ms. Kellin?
Moore.
I'll call him, I'll call him administrative community director.
Just come by. I just want to remind you that we are looking at, hopefully having the workshop for every coenforcement ordinances on the fourth, so I will be contacting you and asking you to make sure and come by and pick up the documents, because they will be in your boxes. But I, I just have a question, does everybody check their emails regularly, or do you guys want a phone call, or have you want us to let you know that they're in your box? Because they are large documents, and you're going to want, you have plenty of time to read them.
Email's fine with me.
Okay.
Same.
Okay, I'll, I'll send you guys all that email and say they're in the box, please come by and pick them up.
Did you, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Did you say the meeting's on the fourth?
The plan is for a workshop on the fourth.
A workshop?
It's on the, it's April first.
First, or whatever, the first Monday.
Your first meeting, and it'll be at four PM, April first, before your council meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So before the...
It's a good thing you told me that.
So that was it, but we'll make sure that I'll let you know, so you have plenty of time to look at it.
Cool.
Okay?
Thank you. Minister of Services Director, Mr. Korski?
Nothing further.
Okay. Uh, esteemed councilor, Mr. Boo?
Thank you for having me, it's a pleasure, and nothing to report.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Yes, surprisingly, I have a couple of things tonight. So we will, I have arranged for Muzigo Construction to come in tomorrow morning and start excavating the fill that's in the main drain, and secure the site, make it safer than it is, where we have the sinkhole, and then that will give us an opportunity to identify what repairs that we need to make, but it's important that we get that, have that open before the next storm comes in, so the drain will function properly, so that's the reason for having it in. That'll be done on force account, time and materials basis, till we understand what the work is and the scope and, and cost for that repair. The other item is, I left with you some information regarding what's available for the community with respect to losses suffered by the storm damage, and there's two different, I'll say two different programs, two different types of declarations. One of them requires that at least twenty-five homes or businesses in the county suffered at least forty percent of a law value, loss in value, that is not otherwise insured. That establishes a criteria for small business administration loans, and the other, and that's under a physical disaster declaration, the other is, is that an economic injury disaster declaration, and that takes five, five businesses to file that has, that have suffered economic loss, and that establishes a different category, but again, they're, would then be eligible for small business, for federal program, small business administration, low interest loans. That information was made available about a week ago, I think those are posted on our website, but those are the, those are the programs that are available should we have enough homes, businesses, or otherwise qualifying, and wanting to submit applications for their losses and try and obtain low interest loans.
Okay, I have a question on that, the, for the residents, well, I guess it's residents and businesses, twenty-five, that's for uninsured losses?
Uninsured losses, yes.
Okay. But the economic injury, does that require...
Those are, those are economic losses, so...
Okay, so there's no insurance for...
Typically isn't insurance for that, some people may have business interruption, but they're for the economic losses.
Okay. Do you have a question?
For the twenty-five homes, everyone businesses, and it's uninsured losses, would that cover a, the deductible?
Would that cover? Not, no.
No, it wouldn't, I think not.
So, so if you, if you didn't have flood insurance, and you had flood damage, and that was uninsured, then that would, I mean, that's, in our case, that's how that would work.
So you could have homeowner insurance, but not flood insurance?
Yeah, if it's, if it's not a covered damage in your policy...
Okay, that's...
Then it, then it would be eligible, from what I understand, to, to make that application. And most people here don't, I mean, I don't carry flood insurance, I don't take most people in the area, because we're not in a flood zone, so definitely wouldn't have it. But there may be other ways that that loss gets covered in a private policy, so. So we've got more detail at the office, if there's people that are interested, that you talk to, have them get ahold of, get ahold of my office, and there's a referral, I think, to the small business, Rochelle, the small business center is helping on the...
Yeah, small business, yeah, and it is on the website.
That's helping on the SBA economic injury application process.
Mr. Plummer, or Mr. Plummer, do you have something?
Yeah, okay, so we, it takes twenty-five homes to qualify, but if we have a qualification and then fifty later...
Well, there's no limit if you meet the qualification, and that's on a physical damage loss.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. More questions?
But, um, so if my house flooded and my car was ruined, would that be covered?
I don't know.
Okay.
I've not had to manage a flood claim, disaster, but I can find out, I don't know, honestly.
So if there's anybody out there that it happened to, they need to call.
Yeah, I think, I, I would say I think not, based on what I've read, but, but...
That's my guess.
Yeah, because that's personal property, not, but we can find out.
Okay, it would be, it'd be personal property, not real property, yeah.
I had wind damage, but it was more of hail and everything.
Good luck getting that.
Could I, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, all right. Councilmembers, who wants to...
Start you out.
Okay. Here, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
I don't have anything tonight.
All right, Mr. Plummer?
Likewise, thank you.
Okay, well, that was quick. Councilmember Williams?
What can I say? I attended on the seventh, the International Women's Day luncheon that was put on by the Center for Non, for a non-bolite community. Also, I attended the Snore Business Expo at the Opera Hall, and I'm going to make a suggestion, because Officer Randolph did a really nice presentation, and there weren't very many people there, so... So I'm going to suggest that they don't start this until about six o'clock so that more business people, business owners can come, whoever wants to take that information. On the eighth, I attended the ATCA meeting in Jackson. We're still interviewing executive directors. We're down to two people now. And, and at the April meeting, we'll make the final determination. On the ninth, I volunteered at the county fair and, um, for the Snore Chamber. On the thirteenth, I attended the, uh, TCTC meeting, and I thought it was very interesting. And I wanted to share this with the entire council. That who rides the transit? Sixty-three percent of Topeka County transit riders fall into the senior and disabled categories. Sixty-three percent. That's a big number.
Do you know how, what the number actually is? I mean, besides percentage?
Well, you can, oh, there's more information here as far as numbers, yes.
Is that, that...
Uh, Mr. Gorski, it's at about six fifty, I believe.
And, uh, the, um... But I thought that was really interesting. The last thing that I have is on April the tenth. Um, this is the day that, uh, the annual roundtable luncheon is done for, uh, crime victims. And I have attended this every year, but I'm going to be unable to attend. If someone would like to take my im, my invitation, this is really an important, um, luncheon. The victims of crime, which...
Is this the victims' witness program?
Yes. And, um, it's very special to my heart because I lost a father. Um, and we were a crime victim and victim witness in Colorado took care of us. So if anybody wants to attend this, here's the invitation, and you get ahold of Junior Martin. That's all.
Okay, thanks. Uh, council member such?
Not a lot to report. I just, um, on Friday night, I went to the Arts Council, uh, presentation. Debbie Thomason was a Native American storyteller. It was extraordinary. It was really extraordinary, and I thank the Arts Council for, for providing that.
Is that held at the college, or is that...
It's held at the college. We had a different, it was the same storyteller. Uh, Debbie was at the college on Thursday night. It was a different. Uh, Thursday nights, she talked about, um, Indian boarding schools.
Mm-hmm.
And her personal experience of that. Um, Friday night, it was Native American stories that were just extraordinary.
Okay.
You know, otherwise, just the regular stuff.
Okay. And let's see, the only thing I can, I bet to report is that, um, I did also attend a Transportation Council meeting, a Transit Authority meeting, uh, last Wednesday. And, um, I understand, uh, maybe Mr. Miller can confirm or deny or whatever. Um, but I, I did have had some people, um, question the, uh, the bright sign at the gun house. And I, I've heard that any, no one has talked to you about it yet? Okay. Um, from social media postings, they said that they were contacted the city or about to contact the city, so, um...
Not me.
Okay, I will, um...
And what about the sign?
It's quite bright at night. Well, that's, I didn't, I didn't attend it, but, um, they...
It's bright.
The, uh, when you go home, you'll notice, believe me.
Yeah, it, it will be dark on this trip.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. To the point that people are, um, are, um... I could see it could be a hazard to the, I could see it could be a hazard, to be quite honest. And I don't know if we have any statutes that deal with...
Would look at.
Okay.
Well, one, one of the things that was said is that they can't see pedestrians and pedestrian crossing.
And the crosswalk.
I wouldn't be surprised if that...
It's like blind Dean.
Yeah.
Especially with the neon lights.
See pedestrians anywhere?
Yeah, so what they've done is they've replaced the, the, the old bulb lights that used to go around the gun house sign with L, very super bright LEDs, like a tape, almost like a, what do you call that? And it's very bright, so... Yeah. And that's all I have to report. And so, um, with that, I will adjourn the meeting.